Everyone, we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I'd like to call to order the work session of November 22, 2022. And for those of you who are my age, you may remember a November 22, 1963. It was a pretty sad day for our nation regardless of where you were on the political spectrum. So for me, I remember being in geography class. And the teacher got a call, step out, went out into the hall. We're, you know, making noise and doing all those things that 12-year-olds do at that time in class. He walks in and there's tears coming down his face. And there was silence like you could drop a pin on the floor. And it was reported that John F. Kennedy had been assassinated. And I think that was a real turning point for many people in this country. We were dismissed, went home, and I remember being glued to a TV for the first time in my life, just as we saw that. So every time November 22 comes by, that memory just flashes across my face. So I'm grateful we're all here together this evening. We have a lot of good conversation to have, but I do want us to remember that this day did have a mark in history that I think set us on a different course. Enough of that somberness, correct? So let me, for the record, call roll for today's work session. And I'd like to call Mr. Burnett. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. With my presence, we have seven board members present, plus our student trustee, for this evening's work session. And I'd like to also welcome Ms. Davis. You're here with us again today. And it's just a few more weeks before you'll be sitting at the board table with the rest of us. So we welcome you and we're delighted that you'll be joining us in a few weeks. So we also have, and I believe I've done this, all the presidents are here, I believe. Is so grateful that you're here this evening. Thank you. And we have Ms. Smith and Mrs. McGrath and Ms. Nguyen virtual. Also, Bettina Selis, our acting provost, is going to be with us virtually, I believe. And Mr. Daniel Barajas is going to be in person this evening for Ms. Renfro. With that, I'd like to open the meeting for discussion on the fiscal year 2024 budget update. Dr. Gonzalez, would you introduce the work session for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC and guests that are with us this evening. As indicated, we're going to have one of our first work sessions on the topic of budget as we prepare for fiscal year 2024 budget. Before doing so and turning this over to Ms. Kim Grunio, there's just a few remarks that I'd like to make regarding our budget and the time that we're in today. So as we continue to rise out of the pandemic, it's abundantly clear that things have changed in higher education. A new framework is required where we can no longer do things the way we did them before the pandemic. How students want to access higher education opportunity has drastically changed. Competition is on the rise from non-traditional providers of "education", such as Coursera, Amazon, et cetera. And our attention to financial solvency is critically important as we chart this new path. Our budgeting model, including the equitable distribution of funds throughout the system, need to reflect our ability to actively respond in adopting and implementing this new framework. Revisiting our strategic plan and our mission, vision, and values couldn't have come at a more perfect time. Maricopa needs to emerge out of the difficulty of the past 2.5 years, embracing its innovative spirit, marketing our newly minted bachelor's degrees and other programs, and tapping into the talents and expertise of our faculty and staff to once again be at the top of community colleges across the country. Today's discussion on budget will hopefully keep these points in mind as we bridge the gap between where we are today and ultimately where we want to be. With that, President Sullivan, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kim Grunio.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Good evening, Ms. Grunio.
I don't know if you do, but I do. I'll be challenged as well. Good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez, for setting the stage for the conversation. Good evening, President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the governing board, members of CEC, colleagues and guests. As stated, I'm Kim Grunio and I'm the vice chancellor for business services for Maricopa Colleges. As Dr. Gonzalez so eloquently laid out, you know, we have begun the development of the fiscal year 24 budget. And we're in the process or we're at the stage now where we want to share a higher level look at the preliminary information that we have available to us today. So as we go through the budget development process, there will be updates throughout the coming months. And so the information you see today might look just a little bit different in the coming months, but we need to get started somewhere. Next slide, please, Elsa. So we have a few areas that we'll talk about. And we'll start with a review of the five-year financial projections that we built out of last year's budget cycle. We'll look at the general fund and capital funds specifically. And then we'll identify some next steps that are coming up. Next slide, please, Elsa. So first, we're going to look at the five-year projections or the five-year look that we developed as part of the fiscal '23 budget cycle. And we presented these back in January. And we've referred to them over the past several months as well. It does include revenues and expenditures through fiscal '27. And it does project Maricopa moving back to a structurally balanced budget for the general fund around fiscal year '26 or '27 as it's laid out in front of you. I will share that if you remember back or back when we put this together, we started with a 2% increase in enrollment beginning in fiscal '24. You will see in future slides that we have backed that back down. And we are just keeping enrollment flat from fiscal, from expected fiscal '23 to fiscal '24. So that is one of the pieces that when we talked last spring, we wanted to remind everybody that all of that will have to evolve as data becomes more available. And so I think everybody's aware that we are seeing a slight increase in enrollment for fall of '22 over fall of '21, which we're very excited about. But we also want to be a little bit conservative as we go forward until we have a little bit more information available to us. So you'll see that again. We also included a $3 per credit hour increase in basic tuition as well as the implementation of a differential tuition structure starting in fiscal '24. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the coming slides as well. So I think with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. First, we're going to share some preliminary amounts about revenues and expenditures. And then we'll talk a little bit more in detail about each of those two categories for the general fund. Next slide, please, Elsa. So you have in front of you the general fund sources as we see them, estimated actuals for fiscal '23, preliminary for fiscal '24, and then any variances that we expect. You will see on the second line there, new construction. We're anticipating for fiscal '24 to be about 13.6 million. If you remember, those numbers come in to us on February 10. And so we'll get those on February 10 of '23 and know what the exact figure is that we'll have available to us for fiscal year '24. And again, just a reminder, tuition and fees. So five lines down does not include any change for enrollment changes. We're going to keep it flat as compared to fiscal '23. So with that, we'll go to uses. And so next slide, please, Elsa. So that very top line is just the carryforward of revenue from the previous slide. So we anticipate 717 million, almost 1,718 million for fiscal '24 as it's laid out and currently projected. In the expenditure category, you will see that we do have a reduction as per the plan of 1% system-wide. How that will be applied or implemented has not been determined yet. There is a group working on that aspect of the expenditure budget. The required expenditures of $400,000 at this point include items such as employee compensation changes as a result of policy manuals. So if an employee achieves a higher level degree, oftentimes there is compensation associated with that. The next line of other new expenditures of 27.1 million include the essentially just the compensation plan, year three implementation, and then $2.5 million of additional funding for marketing that was agreed upon, I think, a couple of years ago. So I'll direct everybody kind of to the bottom half of that slide. So we anticipate then with those numbers, estimated ending fund balance of 170.8 million. So that's a use of fund balance as it's currently shared of $40 million. With the reserves that we have set aside, the 16% of financial stability, system-wide strategic efforts of 38.7, and college carryforward of 25.8, that brings us down as it stands right now at a negative uncommitted fund balance of 7.7 million. I can assure you, we will not submit a budget to you for your consideration that that number is negative. So we would make adjustments, shift some things around if nothing changes on the revenue or expenditure front, just to share. I also want to just take an opportunity, because I usually take this opportunity whenever I get the chance. We have people who look at that and say, we have $170 million. That's a lot of money. And I always have to remind everybody, we're a very large institution. You can see that we have an annual budget of over $700 million. That $170 million can evaporate very, very quickly if we're not careful in how we do our budgeting and our spending. So while it sounds like a lot, certainly sounds like a lot to me as a person, but when I look at what we have in front of us, it's, could be spent probably 18 times if we really wanted to. So I just always want to take my opportunity to share that out loud. Next slide, please, Elsa. So now we'll talk a little bit more about revenue in detail. So we really have two primary revenue sources for Maricopa at the current time. And property taxes, we have about $77 million in available capacity within property taxes as of fiscal '23. As a reminder, the only increases in the levy in recent years have been due to new construction and then also the tax shift that we started a handful of years ago, maybe a few years ago, to fund our capital programs. Those are the only increases. And you'll remember back to the spring when we had a conversation, challenging conversation about expenditure limit, because it's such a fun topic that everybody likes to talk about. And we're challenged to do anything else with property taxes because that exacerbates the expenditure limit constraints that we already have. So where at one point in time that was a lever, we would pull to generate additional resources. That's a lever that I don't really believe we have available to us at this time. So that's a challenge for us. So then a little bit more information in the tuition space. So again, the five-year look, starting us back towards a balanced budget, does include a combination of tuition approaches or changes, one being a $3 per credit hour tuition increase and the implementation of differential tuition. And that combined generated a little over $15 million between the two. So we embarked on the differential tuition conversation over the past several months. And what seemingly was straightforward when we put this into the plan quite quickly became a bit more challenging than we thought it was going to be. And we have learned that there are different things that we need to look at going forward. And we need to be able to do additional analysis before we can implement a differential tuition plan. And to follow up on Dr. Gonzalez's comments, it is really requiring us to take another look at how we are built economically, if you will, what kind of a model we have in place for tuition and fees. And so the general consensus of the district is that we're not in a place where we're really able to do that yet. There's a lot of things we need to do some research on. We're trying to make very data-informed decisions. We're trying to be very collaborative in that approach. And there's just some things that have come to light that we're like, hmm, we probably should take another look at that. So those are things we want to do. So we're just not really prepared to put in a differential or to propose a differential tuition model that makes sense and that we can really stand behind as a system. So we really, truly don't want to do that. The challenge with that is that means then that we're short about $10.6 million of the original plan for fiscal '24 to again start moving us back towards a structurally balanced budget. I think maybe that's, I'm good with that. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please, Elsa. So again, just a reminder of the composition of our general fund revenues. So at one point in time, we did have three. We oftentimes refer to it as the three-legged stool. Certainly by fiscal '15, but it really started in fiscal '13. That kind of third leg started getting chopped off. And then eventually was just kind of yanked out from under us, I'll say. And so by 2015 into '16, all state aid had been removed. And that totaled more than $60 million for our system, both in capital funding and in operational funding. And so you can see over time, we have been far more reliant on pulling that property tax level that I was lever, that I was referring to earlier. And so you can see kind of a shift from somewhere around, you know, 33%, 34% to in the 60s for property taxes between tuition and fees and property taxes. And we're now down to 23.5% is really funded by tuition and fees with 76% dependent on property taxes. And again, I'll probably never say it more time, you know, enough times for myself, but raising property taxes as an option to us is a challenge with the expenditure limit constraints we currently have. With that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. One thing I do want to clarify, because I actually just looked down at my notes. When it comes to the state funding, we have received some state monies. I get criticized all the time when I say we don't get any state funding. We do. We get about $8 million in STEM monies. But I need to remind everybody too that those are considered restricted funds because they are restricted in nature and by purpose. And we can't just use them for operational expenditures. So that, where we talk about the fact that, you know, we are receiving state funding, we are, it is restricted in nature and not for operations. So with that, we'll talk about this slide. And this, we presented in the fall, in the spring as well. And this is just a reminder of if we had raised tuition over the last handful of years that was somewhat reflective of inflationary rates, we could be somewhere around the $100 to $110 rates per credit hour. But we have not done that. You can see that the last time we raised rates was actually fiscal '17. And then we actually backed it down by a dollar in fiscal '19. And we've held steady at $85 per credit hour for the last several years. So this is just kind of a pictorial view of what it would look like if we had followed more closely with inflation rates. So with that, then, we're going to switch to the expenditure side of the house. And so we'll go to the next slide. Thank you, Elsa. So we're going to take a look at expenditures and reductions for the current four-year period. So that's what you have in front of you from fiscal '21 through preliminary fiscal '24 numbers. And so the very first line gives you your basic expenditures. And then everything below that are adds and subtracts throughout the years. And really, what I would really like to point out is that second to the last line, third to the last line, budget reductions. So starting in fiscal '22, we've taken reductions each of those, each of those three years with the one plan for fiscal '24. So if everything holds the way it is now, by the time we get through fiscal '24, we will have reduced $25.5 million out of the expenditure side of the budget, which is 3.5% over a three-year period. And then we do have slated another 1% for fiscal '25. I want to share that many of those reductions have come from reducing vacant positions at the colleges and the district office units. And really what that does is it has the effect of drastically reducing the flexibility within a unit's budget. So where you might have had some vacancy savings and use it for one-time expenditures, sometimes computer refreshes, sometimes furniture refreshes, those all get delayed because you no longer have those funds available to you. And then that last bullet, in comparing the number of employees paid on October 22, I'm sorry, not October 22, in October 2022, compared back to October of 2019, which was a pre-pandemic number, we have 1,051 fewer employees being paid, which is a reduction of about 9%. But I also want to clarify that those really are in the areas of adjunct faculty and part-time temporary employees. And I also want to share that that is a common mechanism within higher education when you have increases and decreases in student enrollment, when you don't know if they're going to be temporary or more long-term or permanent in nature. So that's just an area of flexibility that we have. And for all the years I've been at Maricopa, that is generally what we've done. When we've had increases in student counts, we've hired more adjunct faculty. When we've had decreases, we've hired less adjunct faculty. So it's an option that we have available to us. I guess the other thing that I would share is that at this point in time, with the reductions that we've taken and being able to really target those to vacant positions, much more drastic cuts that, you know, we might think about from time to time are likely to result in losing filled positions at this point in time. I'm reluctant to say that out loud because I don't want anybody to panic and think we have mass layoffs happening tomorrow. That is not at all what I'm saying. But what I am saying is that we have taken reductions and more reductions could potentially have that final outcome for us. And I don't say that lightly. And again, I'm not at all trying to cause mass panic amongst my colleagues, please. So with that, we'll go, I think you moved us already to the next slide, right, Elsa? So this is again, just some additional detail on the new expenditures that we have. And so in fiscal '23, we did have an ASRS rate change. '24, we have to be determined. We did find out last week that they have increased the rate slightly. So last year where they decreased it slightly, this year they're going to increase it slightly. I'm not quite sure they don't just leave it where it is at that point in time because it's more work for what they're getting and not getting. The $350,000 is about, again, the educational advancements within our employee ranks. And then we do have the compensation plan and marketing. Compensation plan is year three of the five-year strategic compensation plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. So with total new expenditures planned of almost 27.5 million. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. So we're going to move then into the capital funding space. And again, this is just a really a quick preliminary look at where we are today. And we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And so we are looking at existing tax shift resources in '24 of 36.3 million. This year, we have a little bit larger amount available with the reduction of debt service for fiscal '24. So that would be about 16.4 million is what is planned for fiscal '24, which brings us up to an annual tax levy for capital purposes of a little under $53 million. We'll have total resources with the beginning fund balance of 178 million. And the next three lines are about the expenditure side. And we have detail on the next slide for those. But it'll be capital expenditures by category, additional district-wide capital expenditure programs, and then transfer to the general fund for ERP licenses. So we actually moved 4.7 million back to Fund One to pay for our enterprise planning systems, our major systems, for the annual license, the costs associated with that. It does look as though we use fund balance, which if we were to spend all of the dollars that are there at 86 million, we would use some of our fund balance in the capital funds. But we also will have some allocations within those expenses that cover more than one year. So although the schedule pulls them all out, it will be a time, a matter of time thing here, timing difference as we go forward. So this is an area that I'm not overly concerned about in that regard. So we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And this is where we have some details. So those capital expenditures by category are largely operated by facilities, planning, and development, and include very typical budget categories that you all have seen before, major maintenance, roofing and paving, major equipment replacement. So those amount to, I shouldn't have said that out loud because I didn't calculate that piece. Sorry. We do have deferred maintenance set aside of 25.9 million for fiscal '24. We do have a line item for large remodels and instructional needs. If those items come up, at 62.1 million total for the expenditures by category. And then the next, the next section is additional district-wide and college capital expenditures. That first line, the college D.O. capital allocation of $11 million preliminary for fiscal '24, that is the amount that we reduced the general fund budgets in fiscal '23 and backfilled that reduction with capital, an ongoing annual capital allocation. So that is what that $11 million represents. It was 10.9 in fiscal '23 because that was the relationship to the reduction. I'd like to make it a flat $11 million to make it a little bit easier. So we'll have some discussions in that space. So we, that category in total for district-wide additional allocations is just under $20 million. And that does include the $2 million of course equipment that we set aside a handful of years ago. And that is to fund course equipment with a cost between $5,000 and $20,000 with the capital funds. And that was part of what our efforts were when we did some revisions to the course fee guidelines. So with that, Elsa, we'll go to the next slide. And this will identify generally some next steps that we have. And that certainly is to gather questions and feedback from all of you today and certainly in the coming weeks. Always happy to get emails and have separate conversations as necessary. We will continue to revise those preliminary estimates, as I said at the beginning. And then I anticipate we'll have another work session in the first part of 2023 to present updated data. For instance, we'll get the new construction numbers on February 10. So we'll have an update either that month or in March potentially. So with that, I think we're at the questions slide because I'm sure there are some questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Grunio. Your finger is okay?
Yeah. My hand fell asleep.
You did a good job holding that down.
Thank you.
So I think what I'd like to do is open this discussion to the board members and just take conversation and dialogue with you and Dr. Gonzalez and any team members that you might have here, just put that. And to do that, board members, I'd like to open the floor. Mrs. McGrath, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Nguyen, since you're virtual, how about if I start with you? I don't want to really call on anyone for this discussion. I would like to just have us offer open discussion and inquiry. But with those virtually, I think it would be helpful if we can hear from them first and then move on. So of the three of you, jump in. That is, if you'd like.
This is Ms. Smith.
Yeah.
I was looking at the next step slide. And excuse me if you said this while you were narrating over them. Could you say that we're going to have work sessions every month, January, February, March, as you get more information, or one more work session moving forward?
No. President Sullivan, Mrs. Smith. No, I do not. I'm hoping we don't have to have a work session every month for the coming three months, but happy to do whatever we need to do. But no, I think probably one, there could potentially be a second one in there. But I would imagine maybe January and March is what we would target for additional conversations.
Okay. And what would you say most needs our attention in this, between now and that next meeting? What would you say is the top priority for us as a board to be reflecting on with regard to the budget?
I have to hit it twice. Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Smith, thank you for that question. I think for me, it is on the revenue side and it is the question of tuition. And where we think as a system, we need to be or can be in the tuition space, delaying that conversation for another year or limiting the increase potentially to the $3, we need to acknowledge the use of fund balance going forward. And the fact that that pushes us out, our balanced budget approach and desire will push us out at least a year, if not two years beyond that.
Thank you. Those are my questions for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. McGrath, Ms. Nguyen. Jeanne, do you want to go?
I can. Kim, thank you for the presentation. I was glad to hear that we have been doing somewhat a reduction in force. And I understand your hesitancy to want to, hopefully, our numbers in terms of enrollment go up. Although it is not part of our budget, it is a factor which is... which is, the foundation has been doing a good job of raising funds for tuition. Is there any way that that gets factored into increased enrollment? Or do we have any? I'd like to see our enrollment go up and therefore hopefully maintain positions that we have. I think that you've done a great job of showing the vulnerabilities we have, the, the lack of cash flow and, and how we need to adjust this. And then I think you're trying to be sensitive to the fact about a tax increase. So I, I just want to acknowledge the whole presentation. But, but what do you think as we head into this next year and we're getting somewhat back to normal? Are we starting to see the increase in tuition? Not tuition, increase in students so that we may not necessarily have to raise tuition until we figure out what our post-pandemic enrollment numbers are going to be? Sorry for the long question.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Nguyen. So those, I think, are some excellent questions. And I wish I could stand before you today and give you all of the answers to those questions. I'm not really able to do that right now. I, I think one of the things that we are doing and need to continue to do is to dig into the enrollment changes, both the enrollment declines that, you know, in areas that haven't come back yet and then in areas where we are seeing growth and determine what kind of growth that is. Is it ongoing growth? Is it temporary growth? Because not every enrollment is exactly the same for us as a system. So until we do some of that, or I should say continue, because it is happening, it's been happening for the last couple of years. And we're trying different strategies in which to help our enrollment change. I think one of the difficulties that we have is bringing in enrollment and getting the tuition revenue from that space is one thing. And it helps with the expenditure limit because our expenditure limit is set based on our enrollment as well as inflation. And I'm quite sure we'll see a little bit of a bump on the expenditure side. But it, it still doesn't address the, the fact that we are, our expenses are higher than they have been. And in many ways, we are a victim of inflation, just like everybody else, just like everybody in this room is. Our costs have gone up. We did a five-year compensation plan. A few years ago, we just talked, you know, very, very briefly, minorly, about year three. And that was based on getting our employees to market before the pandemic and all of the inflation happened. So I, it's difficult for us to say that that's not going to continue or that that will be the end of the road for us. So, so it, to me, Mrs. Nguyen, it's, it's a multi-part thing. And I do not think that there is any one simple, straightforward answer. There's no silver bullet to Maricopa's challenges. And I think that's what, yeah, sorry.
No, no, would you please keep going? I agree with you and I apologize for the multi-problem questions. I think what I'll do and is I'll send you an email, Kim, and specific, like, cause and effect, kind of concerns that I have and, and maybe some places where we can be efficient. And I don't know that we can be recession-proof, but I'm thinking with the four-year degrees, that maybe you could charge more for that because it's a different product, if you will. So just, I'll, I'll send some thoughts that I have. Obviously, I won't be voting on any of this next year, but I, I really have to acknowledge and appreciate the presentation and the attention to detail and how thorough you are in, in looking at this from all sides. So just thank you for the work and, and I won't take any more time right now, but I'll send you my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Nguyen, as you send that information, would you copy all board members? Or?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, I always worry about open meeting laws. So yes, I will do whatever we want.
Well, actually, you can send it to Ms. Graneo and then her response.
You could respond to everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. McGrath, are you there for any comment?
I'm here. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Feel free, Ms. Smith, Ms. Nguyen, and Mrs. McGrath to jump in further. But now I'm going to turn to the floor and ask if there are any comments or questions from anyone with whom I'm seated. So, again, grab your button and speak up.
President Sullivan. If I could, Ms. Graneo, I'm going back and sort of following up on what Ms. Nguyen started the conversation with. That, probably the five-year review that we've been working our way through had anticipated a $3 per credit hour potential increase, tuition increase. And then, of course, the, the potential of looking at differential tuition. I think you've informed us differential tuition is not an option at this point. And so if that is not an option, where are you thinking? I mean, that leaves us only with the other part of the plan, which is a tuition, potentially a tuition increase. If you were looking proactively what that might look like, if it's not $3, do you have a thought process of what that, what that might be or would need to be to get us back in the same five-year progressive plan to get back to a balanced budget?
Certainly, thank you. One day I'll figure this out. Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Bittersmith, thank you for the, the questions. So if I were to just do the math on it, to get us to 15 to 16 million dollars of new revenues that differential tuition had contributed to, it would be about a $10 per credit hour increase in, in basic tuition.
Is that, is that an incremental increase over the remaining couple of years that we've worked through the five-year plan? Or is that an immediate by 2023?
To get us to the $15 million for fiscal '24, that would be a $10 increase for fiscal '24. And that would set the stage going forward. How we would address future years, because Elsa, thank you for pulling that up. I can see that we've got, you know, about $15 million a year in increases through fiscal '27. And that is a combination of $3 annual per credit hour increases plus differential tuition. I, I don't know because I, I don't know what differential tuition will end up looking like. What I think it will end up being is really different components, different pieces. So for instance, we have some areas where students receive essentially sick, or I'm sorry, three credit hours of instruction, but only receive one credit hour. So they're only charged one credit hour of tuition. And that is an area I think we should look at versus having everything across the board. Is that an area we can dig into a little further? We just haven't, we haven't had the time. We don't, I shouldn't say we haven't had the time. We don't have the time to put that in place for fiscal '24. So in no way do I want at all for us to close the door on differential tuition. We just need to move it out for one more year. And if there are ways we can do that, that makes sense and are palatable to us and our students, then, you know, '24 might look a little differently than what you see in that schedule in front of you. So I would like to be, have some flexibility, if we can possibly have some flexibility and not lock us into something that looks like right now.
President Sullivan and Ms. Graneo, sort of, again, another follow-up to, Ms. Nguyen mentioned the four-year degree opportunity, which is fludgling, but coming bit by bit by bit. And we have some much set of constraints into what we can do there on pricing. Can you just refresh the board's memory about what those are and how tuition has to work under the legislative scheme for four-year degrees?
Absolutely. Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Bittersmith. So the legislation allows us to only charge 150% of our regular tuition. I'm sorry, I think the legislation says of tuition. And we have looked at that even when we were contemplating differential tuition, only against base tuition. We never thought that we would ever charge it against differential tuition. That didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So part of the, a tuition recommendation when it comes will be that we set the upper division course tuition at 150% of basic tuition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bittersmith. Dr. Thor.
Thank you. I want to continue down the same line as Ms. Bittersmith. So I think we're all attracted to the idea of differential tuition at the surface level, but recognize that it's very complicated. You know, that we know that we have some programs that are drastically more expensive for us to operate than others. So it probably does make sense for the students to share some of that burden. I trust that as you're looking at the various strategies for differential tuition, that we're looking around the country to see what other systems have done and any best practices that they have. I also was pleased to hear that you're looking at budget equity among all of the colleges. That has been a problem in this district for, let's see, how old is Australia Mountain? 30 years. And even longer for Chandler Gilbert and for Paradise Valley. And then there's the Rio issues, which are a whole nother set. So I think it really is important to try to be addressing all of this, not to mention the fact that we're also developing a strategic plan that we hope will have us operating differently. However, I think the reality in front of us is probably we have to look at more than a $3 a credit hour tuition increase. So it would be really helpful to me, you did include a table here that shows what our tuition would be had it kept in line with inflation and some other factors. But I would be very interested to know what has happened with tuition at other Arizona community college districts, as well as what's happened to the university tuition over that same period of time. And I'm hoping that in this process, we can also have a systematic way of gathering some input from our students, perhaps starting with the Student Senate, so that they begin to understand what our issues are, but also find out what kinds of concerns and challenges it presents to them.
I think I'm actually still live and I don't have to push the button. Mrs. Sullivan, Dr. Thor, great points and great requests. And absolutely, we can get that information for you on the comparisons. You're, you're absolutely right. I think that, you know, the work we did earlier this year to really get us to a space where we thought differential tuition was appropriate, I, for me, anyway, lays out that it's, would be better if we could figure out how to do a differential tuition instead of necessarily, you know, on one side, it's nice to spread those costs across everyone. But at the same time, we do have some programs that are much higher cost and we're not charging tuition any differently. So, so I think that we really need to, to continue to dig into that work and we really want to. So on that one, yes. And absolutely, on the budget allocations and in trying to get back or get to a place of more equitable, equitable distribution of funds is definitely one of the things we're working towards. So we want to do that. And then I can absolutely get all of the information that you've requested on the tuition comparisons.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. So Mr. Burnett and Dr. Norene, whoever wants to leap in, fight over the button.
And I think I heard the, the answer to this. The $3 per credit hour is going to be $3 each year we're going to increase? Is that the proposal?
So the proposal in this look in front of you is $3 per year. But that's what we're talking about without the differential tuition piece. It doesn't really get us the 15 million of new revenues we were looking for, for '24.
Thank you. And I just want to be really careful with the differential tuition thing because these expensive programs that we're talking about are already paying a differential tuition. Dental hygiene, for example, there's one semester that they're paying over $1,600 in fees. Their tuition is only 1,200, but they're paying $1,600 in fees. That's a differential tuition. So unless this differential tuition is going to help pay for some of those things that the students are already paying, we need to be very careful because if we tack on to them an additional differential tuition and these fees, it's really going to price out some of these students. So we need to be really careful when we're looking at, at these expensive programs that we're already charging. In nursing, for example, it's a very expensive program, but those students are already saddled with, with thousands of dollars worth of fees because it is a more expensive program. So we just need to be careful when we're looking at, looking at that. And we also need to be careful as we're looking at, at this and how it's going to impact our financial aid. You know, we look at the number of our students who already have a zero EFC. What we don't take into consideration are those students who have negative EFCs, right? So this is going to put them even further in the hole and it's going to reduce our, our enrollment. So we, we need to be, be very careful. And I think we're going to have a presentation, I'm hoping we're having a presentation, to understand how financial aid works, how, how the, the budgets work, the financial aid budget, that the financial aid offices use to, to allocate funds and, and the amount of money that the students are still left in need, even after a full, after full financial aid, all the, all the loans, all the grants, all the funds, how much they're still left over with. Some of them are still left over with over $9,000 worth of loans, worth of unmet need. And where, where do they take that money from? They can't take it from tuition. They can't take it from books. So they're taking it from their food and their housing. So we have to be very careful about, about some of that. So when we're looking at, at that, so I want to make sure that, that as a board, we understand how financial aid works, how these, how these students go with, with even less and less and less and having to pay more and more. So we have to be careful with that. But I, I agree that we need to make the budget work. But we just need to also be, be very careful about how it impacts, impacts the students as well.
President Sullivan, Dr. Norene, thank you for those observations. And we, those are some of the things we started running to as we were talking about differential tuition. So we want to make sure it gets the, the attention, that it really needs to make sure that we work through all of the different issues, potential issues that we run across and that we've identified so far in the process. So, and I do believe that we are looking to do some presentation with you all on financial aid. But we'll get that confirmed and set up, probably not until after the first of the year, would be my guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. I, as we move to you, Mr. Burnett, I just want to remind everyone that we will convene the regular board meeting at 6:30. So that leaves us a few more minutes for conversation. And then I'd like to bring us back to some next steps that I'm sensing from this group. So with that, Mr. Burnett?
I'll, I'll do my best to keep this brief. So just cut me off. As a, as a student, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm looking at the numbers, a phenomenal budget. May seem overwhelming, but if you just take three zeros away, it doesn't seem that bad. But it's still, it's the numbers are the numbers. And I'm thinking as a student myself, I'm a full-time student. And if, if my tuition went up $10 a credit hour, it would go up $120 a semester, $360 a year. Okay, I'm a full-time student and I have obviously, you know, other obligations, but $360 a year. If someone went into my bank account, took out $300, would it ruin me for the year? And I don't know if $10 an hour seems like a lot to people. Maybe it does. To me, the cost of an education is four or five years of no increases, maintaining $85 an hour. Not saying that we, there shouldn't be an increase, but maybe, maybe it's just my perspective. I just don't see it as being that much. And I think people, well, getting a quality education in Maricopa County that I'm receiving, to me, is worth it, just from a student perspective. And I could see my tuition being raised, especially if it was explained to me that we have maintained a tuition at $85 an hour below the par for the last four years. And unfortunately, with inflation and the cost of, of everything going up, we have to increase this year or the next year to get through 2024. And I think what you, from what I was reading, 10 bucks an hour gets us all the way to 2024 with that 16 million that we need. I don't know if I read it accurately, but that's the gist of what I got. And if either the $10 an hour raise or $5 an hour per credit hour with a combination of differential tuition does that, I, I can't imagine people, students who want to get an education and want to get a, a head in life or a leg up in life are going to raise that much of a stink about it. I could be wrong, but I just know personally, from my experience, it wouldn't be, as a full-time student and 12 semester hours, it wouldn't be heartbreaking for me. I, I could see doing that. So just a perspective.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. So it's my turn. I really appreciate the questions being asked by everyone here. So talk to me. So talk to me in terms of numbers and timing. We have budget workshops anticipated for January, et cetera, but we had always discussed that we would have some sort of framework and discussion and decision around the $3 in differential tuition before the end of this calendar year. Is it correct that I am sensing from you and your team and Dr. Gonzalez, a sense of urgency for us to continue to address this in the timeline you had suggested and we were to move on?
Thank you for that, Mrs. Sullivan. So for me, I don't, no, everybody can hear me right? I'm good. My hand needed a break, too. So when it comes to tuition, our drop dead date, quite frankly, is February. And that is because we open enrollment for the fall semester in March. So we really, really have tried hard over the last several years to not make tuition changes after we've opened enrollment. We had laid out the timeline of November and December for a basic tuition increase in differential tuition for a decision no later than December because for differential tuition, for instance, we have to do programming and we need to make sure that that's ready to go before we open enrollment in March for the same reason as I just gave the February timeline. I think my thoughts on it are that if we think that we may do an increase in tuition that is larger than the $3 that's laid out, I would propose that sooner is better than later because then we can get the information out to our students that those are the changes that are there instead of doing it in February and then turning it on in March. So I'm not the PR person in the room, but I think, you know, in that respect, if we were able to do it sooner rather than later, I think that might be helpful. It also helps us with the budget process and we know what the resources are that we're working with earlier rather than later. So, you know, is it a must-have for December? I'm not sure that it necessarily is. Is it a nice-to-have and better for our students? I would say probably we think we can get there.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and I believe Mr. Coolidge is in the room, speaking to the PR marketing piece. Do you have a point of view on this?
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. I would agree with Ms. Grineo's assessment on the timing. And one of the things to consider is that this, you know, if an increase or whatever the increase is that could potentially be approved is not immediate. This is in preparation for fall 2023 courses, thereby allowing our students several months to prepare for any sort of increase if approved by our board. I would invite Mr. Coolidge up to the podium if he wishes to say any words from a PR perspective.
Good evening, Mr. Coolidge.
Madam President, members of the board. Yeah, I would, I would echo what the chancellor said in that I think that we could do this quickly. We can come back on our team and see if we can build that, present something back to the board should that be amendable to y'all. But the faster we can get this in front of the students, the better, and I think it should be done quickly.
Do you see any risk at doing it at this time of year for us to reach a decision by the end of December? I.e. December 13?
Madam President, I don't believe so, only that we have the ability to go and build an echo chamber. What I'm thinking, just off the top of my head with this, is building out town halls at each of the schools to be able to let those students go and voice those concerns, build some more data as we've talked about tonight with a possible $10 increase and be able to have all of those resources available to y'all so that you could make a decision hopefully in that December month and then we can roll that out on a public relations sphere quickly and thoroughly.
Thank you.
President Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going to cut off, what do you think, your comments? But I want to go back to what Mr. Coolidge said and what Dr. Thor started with. I think it's critical for us as board members to have this outreach quickly to students because they are the impacted parties, clearly, and they're funding sources. And I appreciated Mr. Burnett's comments. I think understanding where the bulk of the student body is is extremely important, I know, to all of us. So the sooner we have that, I think that's data that would be really helpful to us in looking at decisions. I have just one other question. It's, it's, it doesn't need to respond, but in the analysis of materials that you're putting together for some board members, if you could just take a quick cursory hypothetical stab, as if we were not going to do any kind of an increase. You've talked about projected one or one and a half percent budget decreases, which would obviously be more than that. Without getting too specific, if you can come back to the board with, here's the kinds of things that the board might have to consider in looking at budget reductions that would be impacted. I think that might be interesting for students to understand, too, in the conversation. That's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. This is what I'm thinking, I can't poll or ask anyone since we're not convened for that opportunity, but some of this lies with me. What I would ask then is if you can get items done, Mr. Coolidge, and you, Ms. Grineo, in talking with students and putting a quick action plan together. We're convened on December 6th for an agenda review. I think we would and could appreciate a suggestion of an impact of a $10 tuition, $10 credit hour tuition increase, recognizing all the other elements that you talked about. And if we do that on the 6th, it is very possible we could post that for voting on December 13. Now, if you feel that there is any challenge to that, I would expect you would let me know, at which point we would then inform people of that. But I'm hearing from you, Mr. Coolidge, that you think you can do this. Ms. Grineo, I'm seeing that you already have the information that you could work with. Mr. Burnett, you can be our ambassador to students with them because I do think that's critical, along with the other information the board has asked. So I'm looking at some nods here that that may work since we're meeting anyway. That would then allow us to inform students. And I understand it's the holiday season and anytime you start to talk money, it's a little scary when you're also trying to allocate and do other things. But to your point, Dr. Gonzalez, the impact of this is information sooner than later and the actual generation of the need for income would come several months down the road. So that would be my suggested plan.
Madam President, members of the board, wanted to just voice a little bit. And Mr. Burnett, if you wouldn't mind helping us, we'll try to make the connection for the school senate. I think that'd be really helpful to have you on board for that and see if we can expedite, maybe it's a special session or.
Serve at the pleasure of the board.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Otherwise, I think we can make it happen under the timeline.
Okay, you guys, you're ready to rock and roll. I guess my point also is, again, transparency, information is critical. This is not going to be an easy decision. I think you have laid out very clearly in your presentation some of the issues that we have to face. It's our responsibility as board members to take on leadership for this. And I believe we're all ready to assume that mantle. And thank you very much for a thorough presentation. And board members, we still have more work to do, but everyone, this is for the support of the students in the end to make sure that we can maintain our quality and keep us motivated and moving while you're doing further analysis and exploration around a new economic model and financial aid and differential tuition and all sorts of things that are probably tied up with some of our strategic planning as well. Thank you for the evening's presentation. Board members, thank you for your time and attention. Then I'm going to adjourn our study work session at 6:20 and I will convene us back for the regular board meeting at 6:30. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Again, we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for November 22, 2022. For the record, I'm going to now call a roll of board members. I will start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you. With my presence, we have seven board members present and our student trustee. I'd like, Ms. Smith, will you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We'll all stand and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We have some substitutions tonight. Mr. Matt Reeves is here for Dr. Mark Cohen. Mr. Daniel Barahas here for Ms. Darcy Rempro. And Ms. Bettina Sellez, our acting provost, will be joining us virtually this evening. There is no report from the Faculty Executive Council, though I do see in the room Dr. Camille Newton. Now we have our adjunct faculty association report, so welcome. Please proceed to the mic and glad to listen to what you have to say this evening.
Thank you very much, President, board members, chancellor. I appreciate your time and I'll try to go as quickly as possible. I have the adjunct faculty report for November. The title of my presentation is Elections, Slogans, and Tears. Like you guys, we just had an election this November and it's the best in recent memory, I have to say. We asked, we had 19 candidates for 10 positions. We asked all of the campus presidents who had vacancies at their campuses to support us and all of them said, did everything we asked them to do and asked what else can we do? Those that, we said, well, there is a couple of things. Dr. Diaz and Dr. Smith went the extra mile and really helped us. So I'd like to thank all of them for really going the extra yard and getting us 19 candidates for the 10 positions. We're a board of 20, we have eight new representatives, we have two remaining vacancies. The good news is that we have representation at all 10 campuses now and we're firing on all cylinders. So that's fantastic. I need to mention the people who ran. We have Shannon Michaela from Chandler Gilbert, Andrea Har from Australia, Danielle Deemer from Gateway, Gary Marabella from Gateway, Mary Zatizalo from Glendale, Jenna Remy from Phoenix, Travis Meadows from Rio Salado and Teresa Scott from Rio Salado. We have a state trooper, we have a nurse, we have a teacher. We're getting close to being the billboard that you guys want to put up as far as a community representation goes. So yeah, we're ready for you. So, so thank you to all of them. One of the things that I have to say is that the voting turnout wasn't as fantastic as we would have liked. I think we got kind of tangled up with the election, the larger election, and people maybe weren't reading our emails. But we're also trying to increase, the transition is, we're trying to increase awareness of our organization. We're working on branding and getting our message out so that people know we're around. I think that'll increase voting participation and just interest in our organization. And part of that is developing a new slogan. So I wanted to present to you the finalists, please. Next slide, just. Perfect. There's four finalists. People like the first one, adjunct faculty, we are who the students see because we teach about half of the classes at the district and we're the face of your organization to most of your customers, half of your customers, around half of your customers, which is back and forth. So we kind of wanted to accentuate that, you know, if, if you have three classes, chances are one or two of your teachers, one of your instructors is an adjunct faculty member and that all fits into retention and who decides to come back. So we want our guys to be aware of that and people like that because that's who they are. The next two, there's some confusion about, not some confusion, but some people like that. Adjunct faculty, we bring a world of expertise into the classroom. That kind of accentuates that your adjunct faculty members are professionals who also know how to teach. That there, it's not just a roofer, it's a really good roofer. It's not just a policeman, it's a really good policeman that's also doing a second job, an ambitious one, and teaching adjunct faculty, teaching classes and adjunct faculty member. So people like that one. The other one, the third one, we are education professionals and so much more. That kind of puts the emphasis on our pedagogical expertise and less on the other outside expertise. So those, if you guys are betting people, I, one of those two is probably, I just give you odds on that. And then the fourth one, we make learning possible. There's just kind of, this is, you know, you don't need any one of us, but you do need some of us. And that we really just kind of make the system work and that's just a national reality. So those are our four slogans that we're working on. Because we changed from an association or an employee group, we've got to change the logo to. But those are things that we're working on. And I didn't want to do a bunch of, logo is the last thing we've got to worry about. Anyway, which brings us to the final thing, the tiers. We're excited about the implementation of the adjunct faculty tier structure. People are getting a lot of interest in that. They really are wondering, you know, how is this going? And people are at different stages of their career. So doing the 50 hours is, you know, getting the 10% raises for the rest of your career helps someone at the beginning rather than the end. But regardless, everyone's hoping to take advantage of the new tier system. They're excited about it and we're looking forward to expanding the professional development opportunities that count towards those hours to get advancement on the tier structure. And so with that, sometimes I wanted to just let you know that I, some months give written reports. I'm always here to answer questions on those written reports should you have them in the coming months. And I appreciate your time. Thank you so much and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you as well. Now for the staff representation update. Mr. Calvin Duval, hello.
Hello. President Sullivan, board members, Dr. Gonzalez, presidents, guests. My name is Calvin Duval. I'm the co-president of staff representation. My partner, co-president Shannon Maji is at home with three, six kids, so we're all thinking of her. We wanted to report on several things briefly tonight. The first one is, next slide, please. With Thanksgiving coming up, we also wanted to highlight that it's Native American Heritage Month. And around the district, we have put on many different events and there's actually more coming to the end of the month. Couple examples, Mesa has had ribbon skirt making workshops, beading workshops. Paradise Valley has had multiple ones as well. We've had over 35 events among the district and if you are able to, you can click on events@maricopa.edu, the URL there. You can see all the events that we've had and all the ones we are still going to have for the end of this, end of the month. Next slide, please. Collaboration, we've been doing a lot of work with a lot of different groups. Shannon and myself has been, we've been meeting with the presidents 101. We've already met with Dr. Hunter at PV, Dr. Losinski at Scottsdale, Dr. Laura at Glendale, then Dr. Peterson from Chandler Gilbert. And with the next month, we'll be meeting with the rest of them, the rest of the six college presidents as well. We're also meeting with the college HR directors, establishing that relationship because that is a vital one to staff representation. We have been participating in the strategic planning with leadership from district, faculty, and staff. We've also been participating, participating, excuse me, in the 4DX. Many of us went to the 4DX conference with presidents, VPs, directors to help further build that operational component of what we're doing throughout the district with 4DX. Next slide, please. Wanted to highlight our real reps for this, this month. Our exempt reps from Rio Salado Colleges, Erin Co., Claire Reese, and Jason Rich. Next slide. And our non-exempt council reps from Rio Salado College are Shannon Payne, Myanna Spredin, and Marissa Burke. So thank you to you six for representing staff representation. We wanted to remind everyone, staff, faculty, board members, presidents, this is the holiday season, it's the end of a very busy semester. Please take care of yourself. Remember, mental health is important. Stay connected to your friends and family. Stay active, do what relaxes you. Make sure that you take time to relax and contemplate. Eat brain-healthy foods. And don't forget to slump on your sleep, please. It's very important. Next slide. And finally, we wanted to give a shout out. The 26th Annual Gilbert, Gilbert Community Excellence Awards recently took place. It was the 26th and it's a partnership between the Gilbert Public Schools, Higley Unified School District, the Independent News Media, Town of Gilbert, Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and the Chandler Gilbert Community College. And the Staff Member of the Year went to Susan Chansley, a student services analyst from Chandler Gilbert Community College. So we want to say congratulations to Susan, we're all very, very proud of her. Congratulations. Next slide. And as always, if you have questions, you can go to our website. We do a monthly email, offer the news newsletter we put out. And I want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and Turkey Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Happy Thanksgiving to you, too. Thank you, Mr. DeVal. Happy Thanksgiving to you too. I'm thinking, hmm, what would I do to eat brain-healthy and support my strong mental health? I don't know. I think a glass with some ice cubes and something else might contribute. Uh-oh. Anyway. Thank you for that reminder. I think those are very important points for all of us to embrace, particularly during the holiday season. Appreciate that. And congratulations to everyone else you acknowledged. Thank you. We're now moving to student life reports, and I'd like to welcome Paradise Valley Community College Student Life and Leadership Group. And you will introduce yourselves as you move through your presentation. Good evening.
Do I have to push the button? No. Okay. Thank you.
You're exempt.
Well, good evening. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC representatives, college presidents, our friends within the Maricopa County College District and the community. My name is Heather Robinson. I'm the student senator for PVCC. On behalf of the PVCC student leaders, it is our pleasure to report on our efforts at this point in the academic year. This year, our clubs and organizations have been excited about making a difference on campus and in the community. Tonight, you will hear about the efforts of our students to create positive social change. I'd like to start off by introducing Kalimari, who will showcase the student-initiated reflection room. Next slide.
Good evening. My name is Kalimari, like the squid. I was lucky to work in student life and leadership when we created the reflection room. And the really interesting thing about it is it was not born from any pressure from administration. It is purely by students, for students. It's a place for students to decompress, meditate or pray if they wish, write affirmations, color, and I really don't know, like, what's been more rewarding, whether it's been the positive feedback or the freedom that we were able to put into its design. And I really look forward to seeing how both the students who use it and the room itself develop. So, thank you.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Good evening. My name is Sandra L. Haymes, and I started Project Enrich this school year. I made the decision to start this club over the summer when I was going home with food in my passenger seat. I saw a man on the side of the road carrying a sign saying that he was hungry and homeless. I felt bad for him, and I gave him little of what I had. The gratitude and joy he expressed that day changed me as a person. I felt like I could really make an impact on the community and everybody around me. Project Enrich will be starting two projects this holiday season. The first being a toy drive, collecting toys which will go to foster youth in the community, and I will also be organizing a team of volunteers to help distribute these toys. There will also be a letter-writing campaign where letters will be sent out to local hospice facilities, and we will be writing over a hundred and fifty holiday letters this year. I also personally volunteer at the food distribution once a month at PVCC, which helps feed over two hundred families. I appreciate the continuous support that PVCC and the district has continued to provide me with, and thank you.
The Festival of Tales is a fun day of reading, literacy, and cultural activities for our children that makes storytelling, arts and crafts, games, face painting, live music, food trucks, and much more. In its ninth year at Paradise Valley Community College, the event brings books to life through the art of storytelling and provides free books to children who participate in the activities. What began as a literacy event in two thousand nine for a few hundred families has grown to over one thousand families every December. Over eight thousand free books are delivered to our community. If you would like to see what Puma Pride is all about, please join us on December third between nine and one PM. As student leaders, we have been working hard to rebuild our community post-pandemic. The culture at PVCC has not only allowed us to take a leadership role in this endeavor, but it has encouraged us to do so. We student leaders have been invited to join campus committees where we can connect with staff and partner with them on important initiatives, such as Strategic Planning Committee and Purpose Coalition. We as student leaders are grateful to those who mentor us and encourage us to innovate and create opportunities for student growth and involvement. On behalf of the student leaders at PVCC, I'd like to thank you for your time and wish you a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Very impressive.
May I say something?
You may, Dr. Norene.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I think some of the accolades go to Mike Ho, who also received the NASPA Regional Award. Is that right?
Is that it? Okay. I think what this represents, though, is how all of our students at all of our colleges are so invested in the quality of life of our students. And you reaching out through the reflection room, the positive social change motions, I've seen and witnessed at so many colleges. It really makes a difference, particularly at this time of year, as we heard from Mr. DeVal, those things that we need to remind ourselves about and taking good care. So thank you for your contributions to your community, and thank you to all the colleges that also have similar entries and support groups and things, so critically important, and proves that this system is more than just an academic success. It is about whole student success. So with gratitude to all of you, thank you. So tonight, we also have emeritus awards and recognitions. I understand we have five. And will the nominators or college presidents and their nominees proceed to the podium in the order that I call? And so first will be Brown Wen Steele from EMCC. It's all yours.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues in CEC, and guests. I will, first of all, say that, you know, EMCC is thirty years young, and our, we don't get to do this often in terms of emeritus status. And our last emeritus awardee was President Emeritus, Dr. Ernie Lara. And you can see how well that worked out, because he's back here. But I do want to say that we have three exceptional candidates that I want to present to you for emeritus status this evening. We have about over sixty years of teaching experience. And so starting us off is Dr. Brown Wen Steele. So I'm going to go ahead and give her the mic to turn this over. Go ahead.
So I've been in the district for a while, taught about ten years at GCC, but a lot of that was adjunct, and then I got to do an OAO. And then luckily, I interviewed with EMCC, and Ray hired me. He was my division chair at the Times. That was fabulous. And I'll never forget, the first microbiology class I taught had eight students, three of them named Melissa. I'm like, oh, what was going on? You know, who was there? Anyway, it was a wonderful opportunity. I really appreciated working at the district. Lots of professional development opportunities, and I've had such fabulous people I've worked with. Their beaming faces are over there. So anyway, I appreciated my time, and I'm really happy that I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations. So now we have Ms. Stonebrink.
Yes, Professor Stonebrink.
My amazing Astraia Mountain students were my inspiration and my top priority for twenty-three years. And I am truly delighted and grateful to have my efforts to support them and my colleagues and college and district recognized in this manner. Thank you.
Congratulations. And I believe we have one more, Dr. Rivera, who's virtual, Dr. Sudis. Is that?
That is correct.
Okay. Please, go ahead. Elsa, do you have her on the?
Yes, she is. Go ahead, Elsa.
Hi. Oh, you want me to go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Ray, and everyone who's attending this evening. I would like to thank Steve Peis for being so kind and taking the time to nominate me. When my parents immigrated to the United States for a better life, I don't think they ever imagined such an incredible workplace for their daughter. I feel privileged to have been paid not only to work, but to have so much fun at the same time. This acknowledgement today is not just about me. It is about a community effort with my colleagues, the staff and faculty at Astraia Mountain every single day. They continuously supported my projects, whether it was hanging a poster on reproductive justice, participating in a film on LGBTQIA+ rights, or hanging T-shirts for the Domestic Violence Awareness Clothesline Project. Even though my colleagues had very, very busy schedules, they were always willing to support me. They took the time to connect with me through kind words, emails, and note cards. This is what kept me going every day, the people at Astraia Mountain who surrounded me. I couldn't have asked for anything more. I also want to add that my most precious friendships are with Maricopa employees. Thank you to each and every one of you, and thank you to Stephanos, my partner, for listening to me go on and on about how much I loved my job each day for eighteen years. It is an honor and privilege to share this with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elsa.
Congratulations. Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Jean Dial from Gateway Community College.
President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members and guests. I'm Stephanie Pauliard. I'm the interim vice president of Academic Affairs at Gateway Community College. And tonight, with a little help from Julie Bolan, her colleague, I am able to introduce Jeanie Dial as someone very deserving of this emeritus distinction. Although she retired before the deep work of our bachelor's degree, medicine, before the work really began, the foundation she built contributed to our successful quest. That work literally goes back to the beginning of our nuclear medicine program at Gateway. She actually graduated in our first nuclear medicine cohort offered and earned the Mallencroft Award of Excellence, which honors students who have demonstrated excellent academic achievement in the study of radiologic sciences. Within a year of graduating, she was already supervising a nuclear medicine department. Pretty impressive. She always went above and beyond for our program and particularly our students. When COVID struck, many healthcare programs across the country were struggling with student placement. Gateway's nuclear medicine program was no exception, but Jeanie went into the community and formed clinical partners, new partners, with outpatient clinics so that our students could finish their clinical rotations and graduate on time with appropriate clinical experience, which is pretty important. Jeanie has a long history of forging those clinical partnerships and bringing Gateway into the conversations occurring nationally, now as the regional area manager for Cardinal Health, which is a nuclear pharmacy. She represents Arizona and Las Vegas. She continues to provide support for our students. She even convinced Cardinal Health to give Gateway a nuclear tracking software, NukeTrack, and give us the radio pharmaceuticals we use in our lab for free. She also reaches out to all of Arizona and Las Vegas clinical sites for job leads for our Gateway graduates. So now, in her retirement and spin-off career as the regional manager for that Cardinal Health, she serves in important dual capacity on our advisory board. She's our community member and our emeritus of our beloved nuclear program. Congratulations.
Well, I'm not going to give up two minutes of speaking, so here I am. Yes, I graduated from the nuclear medicine program, and actually, I'm a first-generation graduate from my family. The two things that I think really made an impact for the community and the nuclear medicine community across our state was in two thousand and four, the governor appointed me on the committee for rule writing, and that was when we first got licensure of nuclear medicine technologists in this state. To follow that up, in two thousand and fifteen, I worked with the state so that nuclear medicine was an avenue for nuclear medicine technologists to also become computed tomography or CT technologists. And so that was a big win, which led to me taking a sabbatical, got my CT certification and licensure, and then, oh, that made me teaching the CT courses, which was fun, and also was able to show the students then what that avenue looked like. One of my greatest memories, Eric, is fifteen years with Arizona Master Teacher experience. If you ever bring it back, I'll help. And which, that led to a summer project at the Volcano National Park in Hawaii, where I compared their program to our program, and we made our program even better. The Chair Academy was an outstanding experience. The Diversity and Fusion Program, the global engagement experience that I had in Prague was something I'll never forget. And most of all, the three hundred and fifty to four hundred students that I had a part of, making them successful nuclear medicine technologists in the community. I will never forget that. And I'm very proud of my colleagues. I've left in the department and what they're doing, making this a bachelor's degree program. I'm so proud of that. Thank you, and thank you for this distinction.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, Dr. Britt, I believe there's someone from Phoenix College. That would be Mr. Joe Suayoshi.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC, colleagues and guests. My name's CJ Wooster, and I'm the interim vice president of Academic Affairs at Phoenix College. It's a privilege and an honor to stand before you this evening and introduce Mr. Joe Suayoshi, a Phoenix College faculty member who exemplified commitment and excellence throughout his distinguished career. Joe began teaching mathematics as a full-time residential faculty member at Phoenix College in the fall of nineteen ninety-one. Over the past thirty-one years, he was involved in several areas of the college, but his continued service as a math department chair for thirteen years was certainly one of his primary contributions. Under his leadership and effective planning, including contributions to several successful Title V grant awards, the department was able to dramatically expand OER options for students and implement various technologies. This included the Immense Project of supporting the development of literally thousands of math instructional videos. He also served on the Math Instructional Council for over sixteen years. For over eighteen years, Joe led the department's Mathapalooza, which more recently morphed into Calculus: The Musical Performances, which continued this past spring in our math-related events designed for interested high school and college STEM students, as well as members of the community. In spring of two thousand and nineteen, he was a member of PC's Innovation of the Year Award Team. And most recently, in two thousand and twenty-one, Joe received a NiSAD Excellence Award and also shared PC's Heart of the Bear Award, which is a significant annual recognition by PC faculty, staff, alumni, and friends of the college. Teaching math students, excuse me, especially at the two-hundred level, was his main passion, and Joe has made a profound difference in many students' lives. For example, one of his former students is currently a residential math instructor at PC. Another became a high school math instructor. One literally became a rocket scientist. Many became engineers, and one in particular was a mother going to college while raising two young sons. Those two men eventually became his students as well, one of whom has already graduated and is pursuing a master's degree. I would now like to express gratitude and congratulations on behalf of Phoenix College to Mr. Joe Suayoshi, and introduce him to you to say a few words.
Well, if I heard Astraia Mountain writes, "I've been teaching for thirty-one years," and they've been around for thirty years, which means I'm really old. I was teaching before it existed. You know, when these awards happen, I guess the natural thing to do is to thank people, and obviously, there's lots of people to thank, but I narrowed it down to five of the two of my groups. First of all, when I was department chair, Dean Wilbert Nelson was instrumental for supporting me as department chair administration. My partner in crime, my administrator assistant, Kelly Lauks, was really, was there for supporting me. And then Amy Lauks, who not only helped nominate me, but of course, has been very supportive of our department. So those are the individual people I can thank. In terms of groups, of course, my math department, residential and adjunct, that supported me when I was department chair. And then finally, of course, thank the students for their patience with me. And then finally, of course, thank the students for their patience with me, the persistence and their determination. I remember my first year here, I went to the district for an orientation, and I'm trying to paraphrase exactly what Alfredo de la Santo said, but basically, he said that if it's not, if there weren't no students, if there were no students, we wouldn't be here. So I hope faculty that happen to see this later will remember that. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Maybe we should have a Mouthpalooza presentation. The musical, yes, okay. Thank you all, and congratulations to each one of you. Glad you were with us this evening. Dr. Gonzalez, it's your turn. We're ready for your chancellor update report.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC, guests and colleagues that are with us this evening. I'd like to start off by just sharing that last Saturday night, a gunman entered an LGBTQIA+ space in Colorado Springs, Colorado, senselessly killing five individuals and hurting many others. Every human being deserves the right to live their true lives in our country that prides itself globally on our freedoms. Maricopa will always remain a safe space for gathering, sharing, and learning to promote those values to all, for all students, all employees, and all of our community members associated with our district. In continuing my update, I'd like to welcome Ms. Lauren Armour, who to Maricopa is the new Government Relations Director. Lauren is an attorney who graduated from Harvard Law School and most recently served as the State Government Relations Manager for the city of Phoenix. She is replacing Ms. Alexis Sustor. I would also like to offer and extend my congratulatory remarks to our re-elected and newly-elected Governing Board members for the Maricopa Community College District, President Mrs. Sullivan, Ms. Donna Davis, and Ms. Kelly Butler, who will, the two of them will officially join us in January. So looking forward to your continued leadership and looking forward to you joining our board. The 2022 midterm election produced some pretty interesting results. The midterm election left one vote majority for Republicans in both the State and House of Representatives. The makeup of 16 Republicans to 14 Democrats in the Senate and 31 Republicans to 29 Democrats in the House is the same as the past two legislative sessions. And despite these numbers being the same, there was an extremely high rate of turnover. 15 of the 30 Senate seats will be filled by new people, and 31 of the House seats will be filled by new people. We are in the process of sending letters of congratulations to members from relevant college presidents and inviting them to tour our colleges. Those tours have been happening with you and existing members that won their seats after the primary election and will continue with those members who won in the general election. Staff and lobbyists are also in touch with the transition team for Governor-elect Hoffs, but have no details to report at this time. And of course, we are also in preparing for what it means for our students in terms of the passage of Prop 308. Executive searches continue for Maricopa Community College District. Searches are currently underway at one stage or another with Gateway and Glendale, who are looking for college presidents, and we are looking forward to a robust pull of candidates, where the selected individuals will likely begin in the late spring or at the start of the new fiscal year. Executive Vice Provost and Provost, excuse me, Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost is also underway and will be posted very soon. And then we will begin the process soon to best determine our needs before announcing a search for a CIO, given Dr. Cohen's recent retirement announcement. For bachelor's degrees, I'm happy to and I'm pleased to announce that the Higher Learning Commission has approved accreditation for all seven Maricopa's bachelor's degree programs. We have reached a pivotal milestone in our journey, becoming the first community college to be approved to offer a bachelor's degree in the state of Arizona, and are on schedule to introduce program offerings beginning fall 2023. This is a historic moment in our system, which is over 25 years in the making, and I would like to thank our dedicated faculty and staff at the district, colleges, and Maricopa Community College Governing Board for their persistence and determination in making these degrees a reality for our students. That's something we should be really happy about, huh? I'd like to just share a few recent accolades that have happened across our system, and there are many folks, so please don't take it personal. And I don't need any emails on Thanksgiving Day saying that I didn't talk about your specific program, so my apologies ahead of time on that, but these are the ones that stood out in the last week or so. Chandler Gilbert Community College in Australia Mountain were winners of the Governor's Innovation Award for their collaborative work with artificial intelligence and working collaboratively with Intel to develop the first certificate and associate's degree program in the country. So congratulations to those who followed this. Scottsdale Community College recently won the Sterling Award for Big Business from the Scottsdale Chamber, so congratulations. Dr. Regent, his team. We have amazing athletic teams throughout our system as well. This fall season alone, Phoenix College recently won the national championship for women's soccer, so congratulations to the women's soccer team. Paradise Valley Community College Men Cross Country were also national champions, so congratulations to their team. Scottsdale Community College's Women's Volleyball were national runners-up, so congratulations to them as well. And Mesa Community College Women's Cross Country Team were also national runners-up, so congratulations to them as well. Last week, from my understanding, it was a very successful celebration of International Education Week throughout the system, where dozens upon dozens of activities were held throughout the system. So I want to thank faculty and staff and all of the students that were involved in the planning and delivery of all of those exciting programs and opportunity to learn about international education. So to conclude, I just would like to say, in this time and season, when we are thinking about what we are grateful for, that I am grateful and honored to lead Maricopa during this historic time, under the leadership and support of the Governing Board and the thousands of employees who serve as administrators, faculty, and staff, who work tirelessly to make Maricopa magic happen each day. I'm thankful for the tens of thousands that have chosen Maricopa and for the many community industry partners who work closely with us to meet the needs of our great county and state. May you all have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. We now move to citizens' interim, and as we know, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Governing Board. There are a lot of rules and guidelines to this. I've read them multiple times. We do have one presenter this evening. I do want to comment that in compliance with the open meeting law, the Governing Board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. So our presenter this evening is Ms. LeWan Pleasant. Would you please come to the podium? Thank you. Always good to see you.
Good evening. I'm Madam President, Chancellor Gonzalez, board members, family, and friends, guests. My name is LeWan Pleasant. I'm standing before you once again regarding my concerned, it's a major concern now, because I've been approaching the board now for it seems like three years. I have provided you with information. You have hired many different attorneys, Dr. Gonzalez will also contest to that, to thwart my initial complaint of retaliation. You can't, you can't, you can't have a policy and procedure in place that doesn't work. You're not supposed to switch it according to your favor. We're supposed to be truthful and honest in all of our dealings, and that's the responsibility that the Governing Board has as well. I've provided information to you all as well, supporting documentation. I know that the regions is over the Governing Board. I know that I've got a lot of conversations going on out there in the media. My next thing is to get News Channel 5 to do an investigation to, you know, to confirm, because I already know, and you already know, and it just hurts me that I need to keep coming up here time and time again, future do what's right. And aren't we doing a good job for the Milwaukee Bucks? Yes, we are, yes. So anyway, that's my three minutes. Thank you.
Board members, I'm now going to move to consideration of the consent agenda. Do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. There's a motion then to, and second then, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? There being none, the consent agenda passes as presented. Oh, and I apologize, I need the student advisory vote. Mr. Burnett, we passed it, but you have the opportunity to offer your point of view on this with a vote.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll get better at this. I don't know why, it just, anyway. Thank you, Priro. We now move to the non-consent action items. The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the sale of 61 square feet of land to the city of Phoenix for drainage improvements along Happy Valley Road at Glendale North Campus. Is there a motion to approve the sale of the 61 square feet? Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mrs. Smith.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Is there a discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries with, Mr. Burnett, do you have a vote for the student advisory?
I'm gonna keep my button down.
Thank you. Okay, the motion carries with all board members voting aye, and Mr. Burnett also voting aye. We now move to approval of dedication of land to the city of Phoenix for South Mountain Community College property located at 59th Avenue and Alta Vista Road. Is there a motion to approve the dedication of this land to the city of Phoenix?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, Mr. Burnett, as a student, do you vote in favor of the motion?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you very much. All other board members vote by saying aye if you support the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries with the 7-0 and the student advisory vote. Thank you. Next one, approval of minimum wage increase as per Arizona Proposition 206, Arizona's Fair Wage and Healthy Families Act, effective January 1, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minimum wage increase?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, Mr. Burnett, as student advisory member, what is your vote on the motion?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Board members, if you approve the motion, please vote by saying aye.
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 If opposed, vote by saying nay. No opposition, seven board members vote aye, with our student trustee also contributing. Thank you. Our first read this evening was the Employment and Separations, September 17, '22 through October 14, '22 report. Are there any questions? Being none, we'll move to item two, the first read of staff policy proposals, rebirthing leave, catastrophic illness, imminent death leave, sick leave, grievance, discipline. We were given an opportunity to hear from Human Resources at a work session, so tonight is our first read on the policy. All those, are there any further questions before it comes to us for a second read and a vote? Being none, the monitoring reports were presented this evening, the budget analysis report, Fund One. Are there any questions? Being none, that concludes our primary business, and we now move to community linkage reports from board members. Mr. Burnett, again, I'm going to start with you. Do you have anything to report?
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. Last month, I reported that several of us were attending the annual AECT conference. Importantly there, we had an opportunity to do a panel to talk about our Quick Start programs. I'm delighted to tell you we didn't blow it. We actually had stand-in-room-only, audience in the room, great questions, and at least several participants who said that was the best panel they had participated in the entire session. So I want to say thank you to the board, and most importantly, to all of the staff that implemented the work we simply had to explain. We didn't do any of it, other than being able to talk about it, and it got great receptivity at AECT. Secondly, I want to again echo the congratulations that Dr. Gonzalez provided to SCC as a winner of the Sterling Award. I am a member of the Scottsdale Chamber, but sadly, was not able to be there at the luncheon. But I want you to know, Dr. Liston, my phone was blowing up as I was sitting in otherwise really uneventful meeting on the other coast, but the good news was all of the little texts I was getting about your award. So well-deserved and congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about the possibility of increasing the tuition, and I keep thinking there could possibly be something else we could do. We do not seem to have a mindset for a slim budget. We don't seem to do anything to reduce the budget, and we spend money in ways that are meaningless. We recently had a meeting at a reception at Glendale Community College for the incoming Speaker of the House, Ben Toma, and rather than take us around the campus on our regular golf carts, they rented very fancy-looking golf carts, beautiful body job, looked like little miniature cars. They were gorgeous, but that was a totally unnecessary expense, and if we did not have enough golf carts, they could have certainly, if they had to rent some, rented some that were less expensive. We just don't seem to have a mindset anywhere of keeping the costs as low as possible, and I would really encourage the board to lean on the administrators, to think about ways to reduce the costs. I bring this up a lot, and it's a small item. All the items are small, but if we get in this, into the habit of doing it the least expensive way, it would help. For instance, when we have printed material, we quite often have a great deal of it printed in color. We don't need to do that. As I understand it, colored ink is very, very expensive. We got along just fine with black and white before they invented colored ink, and I'm hoping, you know, small little steps everywhere, get everyone thinking about, is this the least expensive way to handle this? So thank you, President. Appreciate it.
Sure, Mrs. McGrath. Dr. Norini.
Thank you. Yes, I too went to the AECT conference in New York and got a lot out of it, including So, but all in all, it was a great, it was a great conference. Let's see, on November 17, I was at South Mountain Community College for the Supreme Court actually held court there, and lots of the students were there to listen and ask questions. Afterwards, we had lunch with the justices, so the students got to sit and talk with them, and it was a great experience for all of us, I believe. On the 18th, I went to PC for the newly-appointed faculty and staff. It was a great afternoon outside to award the new-appointed staff and faculty. And then that afternoon, I went back to South Mountain for the Native American Educational Forum, where they had a panel of Native American educators talking about their experiences in higher education and how we can better support them. So that, that was my month.
Thank you, Dr. Norini. Ms. Smith.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I appreciated learning with my colleagues at the conference that was mentioned in New York. I thought that one of the best sessions was over a lunch presentation. There is a speaker who spoke about the future of higher education, and I felt like some of the conversations that we've been having with our chancellor really show that we are moving in a strong direction, and I think are being really mindful of some of the changes that are afoot, some of the changes in student patterns, and I think I was really proud to know of our advancements with the bachelor's degree, given given all we're hearing about student interests. And overall, I thought it was a great moment for us to celebrate how far we've come with Maricopa Community Colleges. And I also just want to wish everyone a really happy Thanksgiving and for students and faculty, I hope the end of this semester is kind to you and that these next few weeks are good for you, even though I know you'll be very busy. Take care.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
I also enjoyed spending time in New York with our colleagues at the ACCT conference, and I appreciate very much that Dr. Norene did not give COVID to any of the rest of us. I also take the credit and the blame for successfully nominating Marie Sullivan to replace me on the Pacific Region Nominating Committee for the next two years. I caught her in a week.
You sure did. Thank you, Dr. Thor.
And I also want to wish everyone a very happy and safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Ms. Wynn?
I just wanted to say that I attended the Center for American Institutions at ASU that has just opened there, and that was a wonderful evening and really excited to see what they're doing to honor our longstanding institutions in this state, but also in the country. And I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and just to acknowledge that tomorrow, my mom, who, when I was five, the incident you mentioned with President Kennedy passing away, I remember my mom crying, and tomorrow she will be 85, and I always remember that it was the day before her birthday. And so I will never forget that, and it did change the history of this country. So I wish everyone and their families a very blessed Thanksgiving and I'm grateful for where, as I leave next month, where we're leaving this college, I think we're better than when we came in, and I'm greatly appreciative of everyone that has contributed to that effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wynn. So here we are. It's the Thanksgiving holiday season, and, you know, the first word that always kind of rears its head for me is gratitude. And gratitude coupled with reflection in thinking through the past year, probably more so for me than the end of year when we're looking at New Year's Eve, et cetera. It's really Thanksgiving that touches me the most. So my first expression of thanks and gratitude is for all of you who work so hard and diligently to ensure that our campuses, our students, each other are moving forward and reflecting always about our students, what they need, how they make it through our system, what is it that we can do better on their behalf? And it's been a privilege over the last four years for me to have worked with each of you. And oddly, Dr. Gonzalez, you and I kind of mirror the time together in leadership, but there's just a lot of sentiment and gratitude that exists in me for being given the opportunity to serve not just you, but serve with you. And I want to express that to my colleagues and also to all of you. And to that end, then, I also want to express appreciation to Elsa Macias, who always quietly sits over there, but keeps us on target, working, emails, et cetera, et cetera. And frankly, I couldn't function without you, Elsa, so thank you very much. I really appreciate that. And also to all the tech folks, I know a couple months ago, we were echoing here, but you jumped to FixIt and to the Rio Salada stuff, but also to our general tech group. Let's give them another round of applause. They work hard. So maybe someday I can be thankful for not having to press a button. Okay, enough of me whining. So I do want to again acknowledge that I was reelected. I didn't have any opposition, so that was pretty easy. Don't know why there was any opposition. It might have something to do with not getting paid to work hard, and people don't want to do that, but whatever. So, yeah. So anyway, we'll be moving forward for another four years, and I'm looking forward to working with you, Ms. Davis, on that. So thank you for that. I was a lot of places this past month, and a few things just really stand out. I enjoyed being in New York. I was grateful I didn't get COVID, but I, along with Ms. Smith, was really struck by the luncheon presentation that we heard keynote from a legend, I believe, in higher education, and talking about looking around the corner at next steps and thinking differently, being innovative, challenging ourselves for growth. And it really resonated with me that we're on track. We might sometimes lag in one place and push forward in another, but we're, we're working at it, right? And I think that was the message as much as anything else, is keep at it, don't give up, think ahead, not being futurist, but really think differently. Embrace the idea of change, innovation, make and take risks. With that, you sometimes get better results, and so I want to celebrate that. Again, this team is working to do just that. So that was exciting. I was on several campuses multiple times. I was at PCC several times for different things, and I was at Williams a couple times, and I was in Mesa. When I was in Mesa, I had the privilege to present to the Linda B. Rosenthal Mentoring Group, and it just lived in my heart to hear how many people who are staff members wanting to strive to grow, imagine different futures, and that they're a part of this group, this team, in doing that. Really, congratulations to all of them, but also congratulations to the mentors. The mentors are guiding, they're thinking, pulling out values that we all share, that is important to them in the workplace, and the contributions they're making to our system is huge. So that really stood out for me, besides the fact it was representing Linda Rosenthal, and that will always resonate. I had lunch at the Scottsdale Community College Grill. They did not serve me an artichoke, which was really weird, but it was a great lunch, and I would suggest everyone have taken opportunity to have lunch there. Their culinary program is stellar, and also the food was really good. And so thank you, Dr. Lysinski, for that opportunity. There are others I could call out why I was at all of these different places, but it always is because there is movement, and we're board members, and you invite us, and to the degree that we can be in attendance with you, joining in celebrations, witnessing new programs, I think is something we all treasure. And to all of my colleagues, I think it's wonderful when we can be there, and Ms. Davis, you're going to be on deck, so pay attention to all those invitations. And just thank you. I hope you all have a wonderful, warm holiday with family, friends, whatever touches your heart, and find something deep inside you for your own gratitude. I recommend that. So with that, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm going to remind everyone that the next time the board is together is on Wednesday, the 30th of November, for another board retreat where we're still envisioning for the strategic plan. And then after that, our next meeting will be December 6th, when we'll come together for agenda review and our work session tied to tuition, as we talked about this evening. And again, thank you, Ms. Grignio, for your presentation. Following that, our board meeting, last board meeting of the year, will be December 13 at 6:30 here. It'll be be present or be square. That's not actually how you say that phrase, but that's what I'm saying. And then we'll move into the new year with new board members and new activities and a lot of excitement. Happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving, be safe out there, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. So this meeting stands adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.